Julia, and today her sister enjoy singing at many functions within the community. So, welcome ladies and thank you for presenting to us this evening.
(Singing) Oh Canada, our home and native land, true pitched with love in all our sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true Lord strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Once again, I'm on behalf of members of council, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you. Members of council, the first order of business this evening is the adoption of the council minutes of October 29, 2007, moved by councillor Mav, second by councillor Peter Angelo. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried, thank you. This time I'll ask for any disclosures of a pecuniary interest by the members of council. Okay. Having seen none, we'll move on to the next order of business. This evening, ladies and gentlemen, we're having the opportunity to acknowledge a number of businesses who have been doing business in our city for a good number of years, and I'll be able to make a presentation that we have representatives from each of the businesses here, and it's a privilege to welcome the recipients of the Business Recognition Awards in Niagara Falls to our council chambers this evening. The awards will be presented for 20, 25, 50, and 100 years of service to our community, and we are very certainly, and very proud of course, and pleased to honor the local recipients of these prestigious awards. And on behalf of members of council, I would like to congratulate tonight's honorees. Each of you have a strong and significant history in the city of Niagara Falls, and it is a great pleasure to be able to recognize your achievements this evening. And if I may call the first recipient is Edshaw Canada. For 20 years. I have with me Marcello Baroso, who is the plant manager, and Edshaw Canada is part of the worldwide Edshaw group. With their head office located in Remshie, Germany, Edshaw has been a partner in the auto industry since the invention of the automobile. And from 29 sites worldwide, including 23 production plants, the company serves almost all motor vehicle manufacturers, and is a market leader in door hinges and door checks. 20 years ago, in 1987, as part of the company's global expansion, Edshaw Canada opened their Canadian manufacturing operations right here in Niagara Falls. And today, Edshaw Canada has moved its focus back to their core business of body components, and have recently invested in innovative production equipment for their Niagara Falls operation. This evening, it's my pleasure to present the city's Business Recognition Plant, Edshaw Canada, in their 20th business anniversary year to Marcello Baroso. Marcello, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Just a quick thank you on behalf of 186 employees from Edshaw Canada. It's an honor to be here tonight, so thank you very much. I hope to be here again 20 years from now.
Thank you very much. And next, I have the pleasure of presenting the award to Old Country Woodworking, for 25 years of operation in Niagara Falls, and representing the company is Joe Montgomery. And Joe, would you join us please? A very familiar face to all of us here. In 1982, master cabinet maker Manfred Krisz from Germany arrived in Canada and opened the firm in Niagara Falls. Mr. Krisz purchased the company and production equipment in partnership with some local investors. The small niche manufacturer diversified into wooden presentation boxes for many of Niagara's wineries. As the boxes grew and populated in both their appearance and just as importantly for the production of our precious Niagara wines, so did the increase in expanding and export material wines across the world. Now the firm is producing many wooden drumsticks and their special drum brushes for the Canadian market. Congratulations to Old Country Woodworking. Joe, please extend if you would, our congratulations to Mr. Krisz and to your other partners in the business for their 25 years of success in our community. When I say congratulations. Joe, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I would. I've been here a few times before as the economic development officer for the city of Niagara Falls, starting in 1960, and then the region for another three or four years before I retired for one day and unretired the following day. It's been a great honor to represent the city around the world, and sort of nice, three of the people here today came during my term of office. So, I give thank you all.
And thank you, thank you Joe. Can I ask Peter Brunner of Brunner Manufacturing to come forward please? Peter, we're pleased to honor you for 25 years of operation in Niagara Falls. In 1982, Brunner Manufacturing established their plant for truck vehicle brake systems in our city. The private family operated manufacturer of heavy duty brake parts and cam shafts distributes their products across North America and to industries around the globe. TECNA, a division of Brunner Manufacturing and Sales, is also located in the Stanley Avenue Business Park. And Peter, you're always very humble in accepting public praise for your business success around the world, and we know how special it is for you to make this evening for this presentation. And we are pleased to honor you, your dedicated staff, and your many family members who are actively involved in the success of Brunner Manufacturing. Congratulations.
Not too many, he was not allowed to make a speech, but I do want to tell everyone, this is the longest Ted and I have ever hugged in 25 years. Thank you.
Thank you Peter. Applied Strobe is the next business we honor this evening, and Applied Strobe has been in business in our city for 25 years. I'm asking Al de Rocher and the company's president and owner to come forward as well. Both of them? We have others with you this evening?
Sheila.
Al de Rocher and his brother Sid incorporated the company on July 15, 1982, and they started out by leasing a small shop on Montrose Road area. A year later, the business moved and it continues to operate out of 8345 Stanley Avenue. Applied Strobe products include plastic, explosion proof lights for use in toxic environments, and this fall manufactures employees of four people. Applied Strobe products are sold across the country, and in particular today in the Alberta oil sands, Rush. The company is also a global exporter to destinations across North America, South America, Russia, and China. Mr. De Rocher, it's my pleasure on behalf of the city of Niagara Falls, to not only thank you for operating a successful business in our community for the past 25 years, but also congratulate you and your employees as well. So if I could present this to you? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Any comments?
Yes, we are only four of us, but our fourth one is in the Caribbean for a week vacation, and it was already planned, so he couldn't cancel it. On behalf of Gary Towns, I would set this for him too.
Thank you Gary.
And I thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. The next business we'll contribute to is Oxy Vinyls. And Oxy Vinyls has been in business here for 50 years. We have Don Davidson with us this evening. Don, welcome. Oxy Vinyls is the world's largest PVC manufacturing facility, and is located on land that is in both Niagara Falls and Thorold. This year marks the 50th anniversary of the business here in Niagara Falls. Operations started on Chippewa Creek Road in 1957, known then as BF Goodrich. In 1993, the company became Geon, and with the increase of customer demand for specialty resins, the Niagara operations doubled their size in 1996. Three years later, the company became Oxy Vinyls, and their headquarters are located in Dallas, Texas. The Niagara plant expanded to include polyvinyl chloride, PVC resin, amongst other products. And PVC has medical uses, is used in construction materials for our homes, businesses, hospitals, schools, and in the auto sector and vehicle airbags. The company has earned world recognition for their reliable manufacturing operations and expertise in integrating materials to produce low cost, for the highest quality products. So it's my pleasure again, Oxy Vinyls products are manufactured under stringent safety and environmental standards, and vinyl is 100% recyclable. The plant has earned the OSHA Star certification for safety and operations, and their employee force is made up of 90 people who are all highly experienced, skilled, and contribute to the company's success. We wish to present this back to Oxy Vinyls this evening to recognize the company's economic importance and their continued safety first leadership and environmental consciousness right here in Niagara Falls for the past 50 years. Thank you so much. If I may? Is that you?
Sir, just a few comments in my experiences, I've been to a number of different plants throughout the world, and Niagara Peninsula is a great area, Niagara area is just a great area to do business strategically, and we have a great workforce. And all nine employees at Oxy Vinyls, thank you very much.
Thank you Don. Our next 50 year award recipient is Niagara Protective Coatings. I congratulate owners Dean Karachi and his mother, Mrs. Nimitt Karachi, and ask them to come forward and be recognized. Since 1957, NPC has been proudly manufacturing quality architectural coatings for commercial, industrial, and residential facilities. The family owned and operated businesses in partnership with their qualified distributors that export their coatings around the world. Dean Karachi Senior and his wife Nimitt funded their Oakwood Drive business. Their son Dean Karachi Junior is the company's president and continues in his father's entrepreneurial spirit by continuation of developing innovative coatings, and has expanded the company into a well organized global leader for their products. Recently, Niagara Protective Coatings Limited received the Governor of Ontario's Achievement Award. NPC has earned their world quality reputation by conducting rigid testing for their permanency and compounds to meet the specifications of the building profession, waterproofing agents as well, and fire retardant and corrosion inhibitive qualities. Niagara Falls residents may not be aware that homes, businesses, airports, hospitals, schools, pools, as well as floors, walls, and melaneum countertops around the globe have been coated in NPC's products. It is my pleasure this evening to recognize the Niagara Protective Coatings for their 50 years of successful operations right here in Niagara Falls. And Dean, I thank you again for following in your father's footsteps, and to your mother Nimitt, again, who has always taken that good role in management team. Congratulations.
On behalf of our staff at Niagara Protective Coatings and my late father, just thank you for the recognition.
Thank you. Thank you Dean. The final recognition award is presented to Bissell for a canonical 100 years of service in Niagara Falls, and I'd like to invite Phil Calasena, Bissell's vice president, to come forward to receive this award. In the mid 1800s, Anna and Melville Bissell shifted their small crockery shop in Michigan in a new direction. Anna presented the problem to Melville, that picking up after the unpacking of the crockery was not only difficult, but contributed to Melville's allergic reaction to dust. And Melville being a mechanically inclined, invented a solution, and his new carpet sweeper machine was developed, and his ingenious design was a success, and of course word of Melville Bissell's carpet sweeper spread quickly. In 1876, the Bissell carpet sweeper was patented, and in 1883, the first manufacturing plant opened in Michigan. Following Melville's untimely death in 1889, Anna stepped in and comfortably took control of the company, becoming America's first corporate CEO. Under Anna's aggressive and innovative management, Bissell soon began to look good in the new product development, and expanded their business to service clients around the world. In 1894, the Bissell Company founded a Canadian branch briefly in Hamilton, and within a year opened on Pearl Street in Toronto. In 1907, Melville Bissell Junior, who was the manager of the Toronto factory, discovered a vacant industrial building in our city during his short holiday stay in Niagara Falls. Bissell purchased the former Peaslee Shoe Company located on Drummond Road, and within the year, Bissell relocated the Canadian operations in Niagara Falls and 27 people. Bissell's innovative product changes over the years resulted in larger manufacturing operations in the south end of the city. The company not only produced carpet cleaners, but moved into vacuums and cleaning chemical compounds for their machines. Several expansions followed over the years, and the company then employed 80 people. Manufacturing halted in 1984 in Canada, and the company diminished its operations in Niagara Falls. However, they continue to run a successful distribution center here. And Mr. Calasena, on behalf of the city of Niagara Falls, please convey our appreciation and recognition to the management and employees of Bissell Limited for investing in our community for the past 100 years. We wish Bissell, of course, all the success for continued business of success in our city, and on behalf of members of council again, it was a great honor to recognize you as well as the other industrial businesses in our community this evening. So if I may, make this presentation to you, on behalf of council.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Well, on behalf of the employees of Bissell, I'd like to thank you and the city of Niagara Falls for the recognition this evening. 100 years is certainly a long time, and no, I wasn't there from day one, but I am looking forward to the next 100 years and seeing all of you for the next presentation.
Thank you. And on behalf of the council ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to thank our business development staff for awarding these awards this evening, and thank you to all of you who are receiving your awards. You're very proud that you call Niagara Falls your business home. Congratulations to each and every one of you along with your employees. Thank you so much. Members of council, our next deputation this evening is to welcome Mr. Peter Papp, Executive Director of Opportunities Niagara, who presents to us with regard to Niagara's submission to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities with regard to municipal green fund transportation project. Welcome Peter.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, and members of council, to staff, and the audience. It is indeed a pleasure for me to very briefly give you an overview and an update of what's happened with that fund. As you recall, back in May 2007, Regional Council approved and supported the request of the city willing to host a meeting of the mayors and CAOs of those municipalities for public transit, St. Conference, Niagara Falls, Welland, Fort Nury, Port Coburn, and Thorold, to discuss and identify potential local alternatives for the development of an intermunicipal transit system. It was agreed that the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Niagara Region Transportation Steering Committee, which included Mayor Augustine and Regional Councillor Zimmerman, and the Chair of the Niagara Regional Intermunicipal Specialized Transit Committee, of which I am the Chair, would also be added to this group to discuss and facilitate meetings regarding the development of a system. As a result, it was agreed through the Transportation Steering Committee that a participating group submit a letter of intent to apply as the first step to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. The FCM had requests for proposals indicating that there was an allocation of green municipal funding towards a number of different environmental projects, and notwithstanding including transportation related initiatives. This green municipal fund would award up to $1 million as a capital loan, and up to $300,000 as an operating grant. The letter of intent was submitted from interested parties and had to be in by mid-June. This was done in collaboration with facilitation and brokerage of Opportunities Niagara, as approved by the Transportation Steering Committee. On June 25th, we received a letter from FCM indicating the first step had been accepted, and they requested that the Niagara and its participating partners proceed to submit a detailed proposal by no later than August 15, 2007. To this end, an intermunicipal transportation group was formed, and consisted of the Regional Chair, the local mayors, and the participating municipalities, the respective CAOs, local transit providers, regional support staff, and Opportunities Niagara. The main task was to review and to submit the detailed application to FCM by no longer than August 15. In order to complete the necessary logistics and the technical information as required, the committee set up a working group that was consisted mostly of staff, which were the transit managers, regional staff, the CEOs, and Opportunities Niagara. Along with concentrating on the logistics and jurisdictional issues, the necessary technical information also needed to be completed, and with respect to that, it was agreed that an external transportation consultant would be engaged to prepare the necessary technical information. To that extent, Paradigm Limited was engaged. Paradigm, some of you may recall, had prepared the Niagara Region's transportation strategy in September 2002 for the visitor pile in Niagara. They were considered to be well knowledgeable and well capable in assisting in the application. On August 15, 2007, the application was submitted under the co-leadership of Opportunities Niagara as project facilitator, and the city of Welland, who agreed to undertake the financial administration of the project. At the end of August, FCM confirmed with the leads that the detailed submission had been accepted. It was noted that an extensive peer review would need to be undertaken over the next 90 days, and to say the least, folks were about 30 days away, until their final decision on the application would be made in December. On September 25th, our steering group met once again. It was agreed that the project information would be shared with all 12 municipalities, and that Opportunities Niagara would proceed to facilitate that. Our efforts have concentrated on the following: confirmation of a service administration structure, details with respect to the cost sharing and funding protocol, the design of the service, the information related that should be conveyed to all the municipalities, and also to confirm and receive the endorsement of the interested local participating councillors. Summary, I have enclosed for you and leave with you a copy of my technical briefing notes that were not only shared here with you tonight, but also will share with you those notes that were shared with Regional Council July 2007. We continue to work towards that endeavor, and ultimately we hope to ensure that with FCM, that there is a coordinated, confirmed, and cohesive structure to undertake this initiative. There will be a final report, which I'm currently preparing with our working group, that will be sent to all the municipalities for their review and consideration, as well to Regional Council. This will constitute the final steps in FCM's review of Niagara's application prior to the final approval considerations in December of 2007. I would remiss if I did not thank the support of the city of Niagara Falls staff, and I'd like to thank Mr. McDonald, but in particular as well, Mr. Carl Drenn and Mr. Dave Stewart. You have been invaluable to us in our efforts in trying to meet some of the technical details. As well, my right hand in this, the job bus lady, Nancy Sutton, whom you've probably seen riding the buses to the Marriott and the Hilton, bringing workers from all parts of Niagara to the hotel, has been extremely successful. So to members of council, finally, I want to ask, I want to share with you that on December 7th, you'll receive a notice, if you wish to join us, we will be at the Marriott Center for a breakfast meeting, in which case we've invited all of the chambers of commerce, all of other affected businesses, and members of both upper and lower two municipalities to give you a further update. By that time, we'll be in a position probably to know how close we are and what needs to be done with respect to municipal transit. Finally, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for your support, thank you for ongoing encouragement, and at this point, we have not heard any news except that the President of the Canadian Urban Transit Association wanted a copy of our proposal, and seemed to be quite pleased with what we were intending to do. As you know, we're the last municipality, collective municipalities in Southern Ontario that without an intermunicipal transit system, and we hope that we'll be in a position when I come back here in a month or so to say to you that we've achieved that objective. Thank you, members of council.
Thank you Peter. There are any questions from members of council as well? I want to thank you as well as Nancy for your continued efforts in providing access to employees to get to our city, to work at mainly, of course, our hospitality sector, tourism sector, but we really appreciate the fact that you made a big difference. You have some six buses on the go, is that correct?
Pretty rough.
Very good, so thank you for that. And members of council, you may wish to ask some questions of Mr. Papp, if anything you'd like to ask? You want to talk about the principal sum that we're asking, looking for in the region?
We're looking for a principal sum. The outlay in capital monies will be close to about $900,000, even though there's an upward grant, upward loans of a million. We're looking at five buses, small buses, about 20 passengers, just to get it started on an incremental basis, so we're not looking at large vehicles back. And along with that, the operating funds would be used for not only the administration, but the marketing. What we've learnt, from particularly the last route that went this route was the region of Durham, is that upfront marketing and people's commitment to the ridership is utmost for the success. It's one thing that we can have the infrastructure, but people I think are rallying around this, and we're hoping that this type of marketing will convince people to ride not only the buses amongst the different municipalities, but internally with your own systems as well.
Certainly. And we know we can facilitate other locations.
Yes.
We're looking at other industries now taking advantage of the same program.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Would you like to elaborate on the arrangements with the employees and employers?
Right now, the way the employees and employers are working, there's a cost sharing arrangement, the employers, and it's always nice to see the recognition of leaders of service. They pay for roughly half of the cost of an employee riding the bus, and this is the job bus itself, the employees pay the other half. And quite frankly, when you look at the cost of gas, purchasing of vehicle, insurance, it's worthwhile for those particular parties to get involved. And so, and next year, quite honestly, we're looking forward to some other expansions within the main tourist area around here in Niagara Falls, and this will be part of it, bringing people to work, including our students.
Okay. Well, thank you very much Peter, we appreciate your presentation here tonight at council.
Okay, thank you very much, and I'll be back to you with some good news.
Thank you. Members of council, we'll move on to the next order of business. We have a resolution to deal with. I'd like to ask the Director of Planning, Mr. Hulovich, to address this matter for the benefit of the council, please.
Yes, thank you your worship. This report, the resolution is actually an implementation of a report that follows. The council dealt with a rezoning application last month to deal with the Thundering Waters village. In the preparation of that bylaw, we've refined some of the zone details that were not considered by the council in these specifics, so we have actually identified the residential zones, R1B, R3, and R5F, which we want to have council recognize. There will be a holding division attached to those, as well as an environmental protection area that will apply to the woodlot and so on behind the property. These are all agreeable to the developer and the component, and because they're minor changes from what council had previously dealt with, we need a resolution to deal with those, the bylaws on council level.
Move the resolution. Okay, ruled by councillor Thompson, second by councillor Geady. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. Mr. Hulovich, you want to address the next planning matter then please? Shall I have the first one before?
I would move the planning matter which you just explained.
Okay, we have a motion by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Fisher. Any further discussion or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. Thank you very much. Members of council, to begin my comments this evening, there have been some important events in our community recently that I'd like to acknowledge. The city's annual volunteer recognition evening took place last week on Tuesday evening at Club Italia. I'd like to offer special thanks to our Parks, Recreation, and Culture Division for putting on this very important event again this year. It was a pleasure to join other members of council to recognize some of the outstanding volunteers and their efforts in our community. On Wednesday, the city of Niagara Falls was pleased to host many grade nine students around our city at the annual Take Your Kids to Work Day. I was pleased to greet students as a tour at City Hall. They were also treated to a visit to Niagara Transit, and the They were also treated to a visit to Niagara Transit and the fire department before they spent the afternoon with their parents and hosts, and I trust it was an informative educational experience for all those who participated. The city of Niagara Falls Remembrance Day service was held yesterday at the Niagara Falls Memorial Arena. There was a solid show of support in our community for our veterans and for those who served. We were pleased to pay tribute to the sacrifices of our war heroes for those who lost their lives fighting for our freedom. Like to bring council, to council's attention, some upcoming events as well. The Four Pad Arena Complex Project Open House is set to take place this Thursday, November fifteenth, at the McBain Community Center from three o'clock to four-thirty P.M., and also from six o'clock to seven-thirty P.M. For residents who are interested in learning more about this exciting upcoming development in our city, I encourage you to attend. The Niagara Falls Santa Claus Parade is to be held this Saturday, November seventeenth, at eleven A.M. We look forward to getting a crowd of spectators from around the community. Everyone is welcome. The parade will conclude at city hall for the free Santa party, where we will light the giant Christmas tree. There will be snacks and hot chocolate rides and entertainment. We look forward to seeing all of you there. And also on Saturday, looking forward to dedication of the renovation of the White House Church of God on Sodom Road in Niagara Falls. Congratulations to the completion of phase two of this successful redevelopment. And next week, the Ontario Secondary School Business Plan Awards are to be held at the Sheridan Falls View Hotel. This has always been an interesting competition and is a joint project between the Ministry of Small Business and Entrepreneurship and our Business Development Office. I wish the students involved this year the best of luck. It also gives me great pleasure to announce the twentieth anniversary of the Niagara Men's Chorus. They will be having a performance on November twenty-fifth at St. Andrews United Church from three to five P.M. to mark this prestigious anniversary. And we'll move on to communications. The first item on the agenda is New Year's Eve requests for the use of pirate technique fireworks displayed at the Skyline Tower for this year's New Year's Eve in two thousand and seven. Moved by councillor Cario, seconded by councillor Maves. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor, the motion's carried. Thank you. Second item is Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation request for playing November fourteenth, two thousand and seven, as World Diabetes Day. Moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Fisher. Any comments or discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor, the motion's carried. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for consideration?
No, yes.
Okay. I'd like to ask for ratification of community services, and I call upon councillor Peter Angelo.
Thank you, your worship. From the meeting held before council tonight, all items are to be ratified. First minutes of the October fifteenth, two thousand and seven meeting, we approved. Under reports, we had an application for a commercial building grant within the historic Schumann CIP at five-six-five-five Ferry Street, and it was moved that the application for a commercial building grant in the amount of sixty-five-hundred dollars to replace the roof of the existing commercial building, subject to meeting the program requirements, including entering into an agreement with the city and removal of billboard signs from the roof of the commercial building be approved, and also that you and the clerk execute the agreement. Next report, your worship, dealt with the water, sorry, the Warren Creek Watership Plan Implementation Municipal Class Environmental Assessment. It was recommended that the environmental study for the EA be approved and filed in accordance with the requirements of the EA process. Next report, your worship, dealt with an intersection control review at Cherrywood acre, or Cherrywood and Doreen, also Cherrywood and Elmwood, and Cherrywood and Maplewood, and it's recommended that stop signs be installed at all these intersections. And the last report, your worship, was another intersection control at St. Paul Avenue, Church's Lane, and Rale Street, and it was recommended that we receive the report and that staff continue to monitor the situation, and I would say move the minutes.
Moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Maves. Any discussion or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor, the motion's carried. Thank you. Members of council, move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the members of council may wish to take separate? Councillor Thompson?
I don't wish to take it separate, but two thousand and seven seventeen appointment of a closed meeting investigator. I just want to say that it's rather hypocritical at the provincial level of government, and the ombudsmen are concerned about local municipalities with respect to openness and transparency. If there ever was a government that is open to the public on television, in committee meetings, and very strict regulations that exist with respect to closed-door meetings, I would suggest they point the finger the other way at the provincial and federal government who meet in caucus, in private meetings, for all of their discussions. So I support the motion, and I congratulate the staff on using the Association of Ontario Municipalities as an independent group who will be doing this across the province. I think it's appropriate, and we'll move one step further to being open and transparent where the other governments are not.
Thank you, councillor. As well, members of council, you have in your, your agenda a letter from AMO just confirming that very point, so I think we feel strongly about that, but we're going to comply, of course, with the municipal act, and I think it's a good move that we are doing so with the same, same group.
The consent agenda is in entirety?
Okay, moved by councillor Cario, seconded by councillor Maves. Any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. Thank you. Members of council, the next order of business is a property matter with regard to a declaration of surplus lands adjacent to the community center on Montrose Road. Is there anyone here present who has any interest respecting this property matter? Anybody present in the gallery who has interest in this surplus land? Okay, having seen none, we'll proceed on. Mr. Clerk, do you have any comments?
I'll just make a further report.
Okay. Motion to approve. Councillor Thompson, do you want to make a comment?
Just, I, I just hope that this has been examined through all of the departments. This is adjacent to the major recreational area in the city, and I, I hope that we don't, a few months down the road or years down the road, say, gee, I wish we had that because we have another municipal project that would tie into this. If everybody's satisfied, I have no problem with that, but, boy, it's a great piece of property adjacent to all of our major activities to park the, the community center. Maybe Mr. McDonald could give me some comfort.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, we have vetted it through all departments, and for various reasons, we felt that we did not have any toward at this point. There has been some interest expressed. As you know, it's a difficult piece of property because of the shape and also because of the rock and so on, and we felt it would be of better use possibly declaring surplus and using revenues in another area of development for us.
Okay, councillor Deodati?
Yes, your worship. I just want to know what the zoning was on this.
Mr. Hulovich?
Your worship, it's zone shopping center commercial, but it's actually restricted to community center. Would have to be rezoned for other uses if someone's going to develop it for use elsewhere than that.
And just to point out, councillor, we're not voting to sell the property, we're just declaring a surplus, but you may have questions further?
Well, that's what I want to ask, as in the past practice, where we've rezoned things to be more palatable and more valuable, I understand.
Certainly, highest and best use.
Guaranteed, okay, great.
Yes, that's a practice. That's a practice we now engage, so certainly it's to the benefit of all taxpayers for that purpose, certainly. So we have approval to, councillor Thompson, you made that motion, I believe. Was it your second or was it first? Councillor Cario? Any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws for the, or bylaw management for the council's consideration this evening?
I don't know, your worship.
Okay, can I have a motion to reduce the bylaws, and bylaws to give them a first reading? Moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Deodati. Councillor, heard the motion? Any questions or comments? No? Okay, any, all in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you.
Bylaws two thousand and seven dash two-twenty-two to two thousand and seven dash two-forty-one, we're at a first time.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading? Moved by councillor Peter Angelo, again, seconded by councillor Deodati. Once again, you heard the motion. Any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried.
Bylaws two thousand and seven dash two-hundred-and-twenty-two to two thousand and seven dash two-forty-one, we're at a second, third time and passed.
Thank you. Is there any new business for council's consideration this evening? Councillor Deodati and councillor Thompson?
Thank you, your worship. Two items I wanted to speak on, your worship. The first was the Sleep Chief Cherokee's Reef. I thought they should at least touch base. It's been going over quite well. Thanks so much to all the hoteliers for taking part in it, including Mr. Cario, our own. The event this year involved twenty-five hotels, more than last year, and over six thousand rooms. We've got less than a thousand rooms left after three days into the promotion. The, the event has been quite successful so far, and again, we're very grateful, but there are still about a thousand very good rooms left. And I suggest to people, your first and second choice have already been taken. There are so many hidden treasures in the city that you wouldn't realize until you go down there, and this is the right place to test out those, those hidden treasures. I know every year, people tell me, and I never knew about this place, and, boy, was I pleasantly surprised. So it's a good opportunity, and as well, I should report that twenty-four charitable groups did apply for the proceeds that will be raised in this event, and we have formed a committee, and we are just waiting for some additional information on some of those groups, but you can rest assured that the money will be split evenly between fifty percent going to the Niagara Community Foundation, where dividends will be paid out in the future, the gift that will keep on giving, giving, and then fifty percent will be given before Christmas to the groups that are selected. So that was the first item of business, just a little housekeeping note.
And there, I understand, councillor, before you move on, you move your living room into a health center, is that correct?
Yeah, yes, exactly.
You're getting calls at home, I understand, so don't, don't call you, is that fair to say?
Yeah, don't call me. I laugh because in the first year, there was a little bit of confusion, and we received quite a few calls at home, and I think somebody saw in the paper that I had some explaining to do at home, and there was one in call in the house looking for queen-sized beds overlooking the falls. Said, honey, it's not what you think. So anyway, needless to say, that has stopped, and the message has gotten through nice and loud and clear, and I'm happy to say that nobody's called me looking for a room, so that's great. Just then, on another note, I'm sure a lot of us saw on the news this past week, Hazel Macallion, the mayor of Mississauga, has taken a very strong stance in her city's now promotion, and I just wanted to talk on this a little bit and put forward a resolution. For those of you that may or may not know, Mississauga has put a five percent surcharge, as they call it, a special infrastructure levy, onto their municipal taxes. And the reason being, they have a major shortfall with regard to infrastructure, and it's unfortunate that they're in this situation, and Niagara Falls, like Mississauga, are in a very similar situation, and it puts us in a tough spot. Every year, we need to deal with the, the things that we'd like to have in the city and the things that we need to have in the city. And unfortunately, we can't have everything we'd like because unfortunately, there's a lot of things that break down, and we have to put money toward these items. So I've put together a resolution that I'm hoping for some support. Since municipalities only receive approximately eight cents, eight cents for every tax dollar collected in Canada, and whereas the province collects forty-two cents, the federal government collects fifty cents, and whereas the federal government experiences consistent and high-budget surpluses and is most capable of delivering relief to municipalities, and whereas decaying public transit, bridges, water and sewer lines, roads, buildings, and other municipal infrastructure require as much as one hundred billion dollars to repair within Canada's municipalities, be resolved that the federal government do the right thing and share the much-needed surplus tax dollars with Canada's municipalities and preserve the quality of life for its citizens. So moved.
Is there a secondary? Councillor Wing, any discussion? Having seen none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you.
And, your worship, I would motion as well that this letter, which I left out, I'm sorry, be forwarded to the Canadian, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, our local MP, Finance Minister Jim Flaherty, Mississauga City Council, regional government, and the municipalities within the Niagara region as well.
That's fine. Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Can't wait for the check to come in. I have two, two matters that I'd like to bring to your attention. First one has to do, deal with the solid waste disposal and the user pay issue that we discussed at the last meeting, and also Mr. Freesum's comments with respect to what is happening with the solid waste disposal. The headline in the Niagara this week, thanks to Mr. LaPonce, was "Council Wants Full User Pay Garbage Pickup," and they happened to stick Alderman Fisher, my picture, in the end, saying that we opposed it. And as a result of that, I certainly got a reaction with respect to the matter, and I was extremely surprised that there was really no debate on this when it was brought up, was brought up. There was no input from staff, a question asked with, from Mr. Freesum, and full user pay means it has definite ramifications with respect to a local taxpayer, and I have been trying to reduce the debt and taxes and costs to the local taxpayer and the residential area of seniors and people on fixed incomes for the most of my life. And this certainly flies in the face of that. If you have user pay, that means you pay exactly what the service costs. In the municipality, we have all kinds of commercial, industrial, tourist, commercial properties here, and everybody is always envious of that because that's what pays your bills and subsidizes the residential taxpayer with respect to the services that we receive. And looking into this further, I found, and thanks to Mr. Dulevik, with some specific information, so you can relate to this, in two oh seven, the cost for the service for solid waste pickup was seventy-two dollars and sixty-one cents per one hundred thousand of assessment. So the cost to the average taxpayer was about a hundred and twelve dollars on a hundred and fifty-four thousand assessment. In two oh one, two oh two, we looked at the same situation and attempted to determine whether user pay was the way to go, and at that particular time, a residential property would have paid a hundred and sixty-one forty-six. And five years have gone by since then, and the estimated cost now would be about two hundred dollars for the service, which is a substantial amount of increase, almost eighty dollars more on the small-end user of a residential taxpayer. I got several calls on that and stimulated my, my interest in giving, getting some specifics, but I also got some emails and phone calls regarding the reduction in service. And I think we had a full debate, but there was really no resolution. There was no message being sent on to the region with respect to the reduction of the service to biweekly or every two weeks for garbage pickup. We certainly heard about the diapers and the reduction in service, and the emails I got were basically, you're reducing my service, I'm sure you're not going to reduce my taxes, which we never heard in the submission that was made by Mr. Freesum. I think this is a, a sleeping giant that is going to all of a sudden wake up a few months down the road when decisions are being made, and I think that this is an excellent topic to, to talk about with our regional councillors, to send a message, but I think I would like to see a report from staff giving alternatives. In fact, one gentleman suggested another possibility rather than every two weeks, that you'd be given a hundred and four tags for your bags at the start of the year, and once you run out of them, then you start to pay for your tags. And the whole idea is to stimulate recycling, obviously. That's why they're going to the two-week pickup. I think there are other ways that can be looked at. I'm sure that the drivers that go around and pick up garbage know exactly who recycles and who doesn't recycle, and I'm not suggesting that we hire a whole army of, of recycling police, but I'm sure that people were contacted directly and talked to and explained and educated with respect to the benefits of recycling. I think that it would go a lot further because there's a lot of great savings involved in this two weeks. In fact, it will not affect the local taxpayer positively, and if we go to a direct user pay, it's going to hurt the low-end people substantially. Probably, we, we give seniors on fixed incomes, I think, a hundred-dollar rebate for their sewer and water, so we're going to take it back by going to a user pay. So I, I think this topic has not been, been fully discussed. I'd like to ask if we could have a report back from the staff on recommendations where they think we should be going. I, I don't think anybody can honestly stand up and say they're not interested in stimulating recycling and certainly less going to our landfill sites, although there has been a reduction in the amount of glass, according to Mr. Freesum, as a result of, and I specifically asked him the question, with the liquor control board taking all of the bottles from wine and liquor and, and whatever, and people are starting to do that, and I think that's an improvement. And we're so fortunate here with the Walker site, the more stone extraction they, they get, the more space we the more space we have for solid waste disposal. So, we don't have any imminent problems with respect to that. But I'm glad I voted against the user pay. I'd like to have the council be aware of this, in fact, I'll let the clerk circulate Mr. Dulevik's memo with respect to that and I'd make a motion that we send a clear message to the region and to our regional partners from Niagara Falls, exactly what we'd like to see with respect to this and I would like to have some input regarding the user pay and the cost involved.
Do you have a second to the motion? Councillor Peter Angelo, do you wish to speak to it?
I did, your worship, and I was going to speak on this issue anyway and, your worship, I'm not sure if members of council read in the paper this week, but there was an article that talked about the picking up of garbage every two weeks and the gist of the article, your worship, was that the region was moving to picking up the garbage every two weeks because of a lack of participation on behalf of the Niagara Falls residents in the organics collection program, citing that according to their numbers, only 10% of the residents in Niagara Falls actually participated in the organics program. You know, your worship, I wasn't too happy when I read the article. I mean, when Mr. Freesum was here last meeting, he never actually gave us that statistic that only 10% of the people of Niagara Falls participate and, your worship, I don't know if it was taken into account either, but, you know, a few years ago, there was a very big push on the black composting program, the big bins that people have in their backyards. I know I even have one in my backyard. Your worship, there's a lot of people that do their own composting, there's a lot of people that use the, that use the plastic flat container themselves. Your worship, I don't know if this was taken into consideration, but when Mr. Freesum was here, you know, I know that he was here because he wanted to increase diversion. I think that one of the best ways that you can increase diversion is to educate the public, as councillor Thompson just said as well. I think that if you don't educate the public on the benefits of diverting the waste, then even picking up the garbage every two weeks is not going to make some people divert their waste. If they're uneducated, then they won't be doing it, your worship. And, you know, the other message that Mr. Freesum was here to tell us was simply that, you know, another reason why they were doing this was because of costs and that wasn't actually in the article. And I think, your worship, that one of the major costs of collecting garbage, obviously, is the tipping fees and it's no secret that right now, I believe there's only three dump sites that are owned by the region right now and I think two of them are going to be closing very shortly, so within the next year or so. So, I mean, you know, that's part of a cost, your worship, that I guess the region, I don't believe, anyway, has full control over because they're somewhat at the mercy of the private sector. So, you know, your worship, I think in the end, I don't believe that it's a fair comment to tell the residents that their lack of participation in the organics program is the reason why they're going to go to a two-week pickup. I think that there's a lot of other factors that take play in it and I hope that you can pass that on to the region, your worship.
Sure will. Thank you, councillor, both councillors, I appreciate your comments. I calculated the figures to be about $3.50 per week per household for our pickup, but I know the diversion we have currently is around 45%. The region's hoping to achieve 65% diversion, but I think we need more education amongst the public and I agree with your comments. We do have time, this wasn't a plan that was going to be implemented in 2008, but I think that as far as the decision goes, we should make our points well-known to the regional council and are prepared to take a resolution forward if you wish or to arrange a meeting with other regional councillors from Niagara Falls with respect to this matter. So, councillor, your pleasure, if you want to make a motion or a resolution to extend your concern about this, councillor Thompson?
Yeah, exactly, I think we can do that, having a proper, accurate report from the staff to give us the benefit to do that and endorse that.
In your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Councillor Angelo, are you agreeing with that? Okay. Mr. Clerk?
Through the chair, I think that's appropriate, a report back from staff because that was part of the criticism at the beginning, that there were some decisions made without a forewarning of the issue. Council is reminded, though, that councillor Peter Angelo actually brought up many of these same issues and we did send a resolution to the region already about four months ago on that, asking that they maintain the same level of service. In fact, that letter and resolution was in your package last week with the materials on Mr. Freesum, but I think it's appropriate we come back with a staff report and that'll help solidify any future position that you want to take and direct to the region.
Okay. Councillor Ling, to this matter?
Yes, Ling. I think maybe I should sort of follow up on Victor's comments first. It seemed to me that what we were hearing from Mr. Freesum was maybe the biggest or one of the biggest costs is the weekly collection, just what it costs in terms of labor to send gas, to send people around to pick it up weekly. And I know that one of the things I remember is that that's one of the reasons they're looking at the biweekly, is to save a lot of costs, but also to increase diversion. I think one of the things that needs to be clarified is this idea of full user pay. We're already all ready paying the full cost, it's not going to be new money. It's just instead of being buried on a regional tax bill where we can't see it, it would be broken out and you would have a choice instead of, conversely to what councillor Thompson's suggesting, instead of hurting the low-end user, this would help the low-end user. This is exactly the same principle as full user pay for water and sewage treatment, you know, and so instead of having a huge service cost and small consumption charges you can control, if we have full user pay for our water and sewage ratings, then everything you pay hinges on how much you use. And this is the exact same principle. If you haul a lot of garbage, you take a big container, you pay X amount a year, if you use a normal amount of garbage or a medium amount, it's a smaller container, you pay accordingly, and if you really recycle and don't foot out a lot, it's a small container and you pay accordingly. And so, instead of just burying it on the regional tax bill and you may be putting out very little to the curb and subsidizing everybody else who's putting out a lot more, you actually have the chance with full user pay to control how much you pay and it helps the people, like I say, somebody, one person alone in a household on a pension, it gives them the chance to actually control how much they pay for garbage. I suggested that they take a second look at it as an alternative to the biweekly collection, which I think we all realize is not going to be popular with the public, especially people like us sitting on the side of the table who have kids. You know, this is something that could be looked at as an alternative to drive that diversion that needs to be driven, but also to try and keep costs down for people who are struggling to stay in their homes. Now, this is not new money at all and I think that's one thing. Of having no control over it to control how much they pay for their garbage collection.
Councillor Thompson?
Well, I want to clarify this matter because there's a great deal of confusion with respect to this. And I didn't want to make a big deal out of this, but there's no hidden cost on the tax bill or by the taxpayer or by the municipality. We have the hotel industry, the industrial industry that usually has their own pickup, pays for it privately, but under the assessment, they pay towards solid waste disposal. Mr. Dulevik, could you confirm or deny that this is the situation, we don't have a hidden cost on the tax bill?
Mr. Dulevik?
Yes, through your worship, on the tax bill, there is a regional rate for waste management. All the sectors are charged at, from residential, multi-residential, including industrials, commercial. Matter of fact, my office has received phone calls from the commercial sector who are paying tens of thousands of dollars on a tax bill towards waste management, yet they don't avail themselves of the service because it's, I think, a seven-bag limit for a commercial building. These 30-story hotel towers, they're doing their own waste management services, they're paying for that and on top of that, they're still paying for their taxes for services that they're not getting.
I wish you didn't have to say that, but anyway, that's the situation. There's only two municipalities in the region that have the user pay. Everybody else is on the same system where everybody contributes every business through their assessment, which filters down to a savings to the small-end user in a residential house.
Do you have a motion on the floor, members of council? If there's no more comments, we'll call the vote, all of them in favor of the motion. Any opposed, it's carried unanimously, thank you very much. Councillor Thompson, you have another matter?
Yes. Probably most of the people around the table have been working with, or have had Facilitate an opportunity. An art gallery, which is part of their objectives and I worked with a local entrepreneur here for many years to try to see if we could utilize his artwork, which he would be, was willing at that time, to a suitable location to donate it to the municipality in his name. I have been attempting to work on that. However, I heard the other day through a very reliable source that there was supposed to be a portrait museum right directly across the road from the Parliament Buildings in Ottawa. The previous government had refurbished and put millions of dollars into this building to put this very substantial and very expensive portrait museum directly across from the Parliament Buildings in Ottawa. The present government has decided not to locate it there and these paintings are all in limbo and it is being put out to, apparently there are nine municipalities, Ottawa, Vancouver, others who are bidding for the opportunity to have this artwork brought to their municipality at a suitable location. I think that this is, where else could you get the 15 million, 14 million visitors a year coming to the municipality, an opportunity to find a home and particularly with the decision of the council to put dollars into the downtown and particularly, I think the building they're talking about is out in front of City Hall. I think that we should be in touch with our federal member and express the interest of the city of Niagara Falls, that we would be willing to participate to try to house or even partially house some of the artwork that is available through the federal government that they apparently don't want in this building that they put so much money into. And I think it's a great opportunity and could be a real catalyst to try to stimulate and be one of the initial things to happen in the downtown area of the city of Niagara Falls and right off of River Road for tourist attraction. So, I would like to suggest that the, to the staff, investigate the possibilities, be in touch with our federal member and see if we can't at least have partial opportunity for this or depending on the size and the council's willingness to facilitate this in our downtown area.
Councillor, do you wish to make that a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Moved by councillor Thompson, the seconded, councillor Fisher. Any further discussion on the matter? Having seen none, all of them in favor? The motion's carried. Thank you very much. Councillor Peter Angelo, did you have a comment? New business?
Under new business, your worship?
Yes, sir.
Your worship, I guess just a quick question over the planning. I did receive another letter in regards to the Bethlehem Project of Niagara Residence, your worship, which is wondering whether or not there's a date that's been set, whether or not, I guess, the proposal has to go through a rezoning. I guess they're just wondering, your worship, whether or not they're willing to get a chance to give any input on the situation.
Mr. Hulovic, do you have an idea what the timing might be?
The application, this is the Garner area?
Yes.
There would be a public meeting that would be required to go along with that.
So, notice would be sent out, submission notice?
To everyone within 400 feet, there would be a notice posted on the property. That hasn't occurred to date, I'm not sure that we actually have an application in the office at this point.
Councillor, is that okay? Okay. And councillor Ling, did you wish to say something? New business? Okay. Any other new business, members of council? If not, ask. Dear members, councillor Kerry, councillor Maves, all of them in favor? Thank you very much.